Okay, well, are you guys ready? Are you ready? I think we're live on Granicus. We got everything set up in our new digs in the community center. And this is the January 2 organizational meeting of the city council. So we'll do a brief organizational meeting and then there is a work session to follow. And I will start the meeting and then after the mayoral election, the mayor will take over the gavel and run the rest of the meeting. So we're gonna start first with call to order, the only time I get to do that. And then we'll rise for the pledge of allegiance and the flag is overturned.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. These are different mics than we've been using, so they're green all the time. They light up green when you're using them, just so you know. And you won't feed through the feed unless you're using the mic, so. And I will start with the roll call of the newly seated council. Ms. Connolly.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Ms. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Z.
Here.
Mr. Tartar.
Here.
Thank you, council. And so our next item is election of mayor. And I would like to call for nominations for mayor. Mr. Z.
Madam Clerk, thank you. I move to nominate a person that has displayed the finest traits of leadership. Over the past four years, I've seen David Tartar in action as mayor and his perspective for that role has displayed the traits we look for in a leader and mayor. He practices the public virtues of transparency, fairness, an open mind, and a willingness to engage in honest dialogue. I've seen how he promotes others instead of himself and how he strives to give others the opportunity and time to speak before he does. This lightness of footprint is a character trait that we all appreciate. He has won the respect and admiration of his fellow council members with his attitude, tireless energy, and dedication to the advancement of our city, its schools, and all the citizens that live within its borders. He has successfully navigated beyond our borders and has enlarged Falls Church City's presence with a recognized presence on the regional stage. Therefore, it is my honor and privilege to nominate P. David Tartar for mayor of the City Falls Church, Virginia.
Thank you, Mr. Z. And the nominations do not require a second. Do we have any other nominations for mayor?
I would just, I know a second isn't required, but I would fully support for the reasons that council members indicated.
Thank you. If there are no other nominations.
Madam Clerk, I believe we close the nominations.
Thank you. We closed the nominations for mayor. And so I will take a roll call vote on David Tartar for mayor. Ms. Connolly.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan.
Yes, Mr. Tartar.
Ms. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Z.
Yes.
And Mr. Tartar.
Yes.
And Mayor Tartar is reelected unanimously.
Okay. Now it is time to elect vice mayor. Do we have any nominations for vice mayor? Mr. Duncan.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we nominate Mary Beth Connolly for vice mayor.
All right. Excellent choice. Are there any other nominations for vice mayor? Seeing none, nominations are closed. Madam Clerk, will you?
Yes, sir. Ms. Connolly.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan.
Yes, Ms. Connolly.
Ms. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Z.
Yes.
And Mr. Tartar.
Yes.
And Mayor Tartar is reelected unanimously.
Okay. Now it is time to elect vice mayor. Do we have any nominations for vice mayor? Mr. Duncan.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we nominate Mary Beth Connolly for vice mayor.
All right. Excellent choice. Are there any other nominations for vice mayor? Seeing none, nominations are closed. Madam Clerk, will you?
Yes, sir. Ms. Connolly.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan.
Yes, Ms. Connolly.
Ms. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Z.
Yes.
Mayor Tartar.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Vice Mayor Connolly is reelected unanimously. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, I would've said many glowing things about Ms. Connolly, as we're said about you, but I know we're under a dictate in our new quarters here to be brief and get out of here by 10 o'clock. So we all know the fine job that she's done as vice mayor and look forward to working with her in the future.
Fantastic. If we, I know we've got a lot to do tonight, but I would like to say a few words if I could. First, as to rules of procedure, I think it's important now that we're here at our new location that there should be a rule that there's no air hockey or ping pong in this room until after 10 o'clock.
No basketball.
No basketball either. Seriously, let me say, I'm deeply honored by this selection this evening. I appreciate the trust you've placed in me. Falls Church is a great city we all love, but our city's not standing still. We're on the cusp of a great undertaking, a significant investment in ourselves, our children, and our future that'll pay dividends for years to come. The new high school will ensure that education remains a cornerstone of our community and reflects our shared values and priorities. The 10 acres of commercial development presents a unique opportunity to help pay for the school, but more importantly, to create a special sense of place and catalyze development in the west end of the city. And the remainder of our capital improvement plan, the library, city hall, and other infrastructure projects, will enhance the quality of life for all of our citizens. I'm confident that this council has the knowledge, dedication, and commitment to get the job done and get the job done well. We all bring different backgrounds and experiences to the table, but together, our skills complement each other, and I believe we'll make an effective team. Vice Mayor Connolly has intimate knowledge of our schools and understands the needs of teachers, students, and staff. She has deep ties to the community, local business, and nonprofit. She brings people together and knows how to get things done. Dave Snyder is a seasoned leader, respected throughout the region. He has unparalleled knowledge of transportation issues, which will be critical to the optimization of the school site. Dave helped shepherd the Mary Ellen Henderson renovation in the finish line on time and under budget. Dan, Dan Z, is a recognized leader in environmental issues at the state and regional level. He's a professional architect and understands the complexity of construction and design and large-scale contracting. As a federal employee, he has substantial experience with major project procurements. Phil, Phil Duncan chairs the city council's economic development committee and has been a tireless advocate for smart commercial growth here in the city. Phil has his ear close to the ground with over three decades of civic engagement and has been involved with nearly every civic group in the city. Letty Hardy, smart, organized, always well-prepared, and is never afraid to ask tough questions. She has much-needed major financial services and project management expertise that is of tremendous value to our current endeavors. Our newest city council member, Ross Littenhouse, brings a fresh perspective, new ideas, and new energy. He understands complex real estate finance, taxing districts, and other sophisticated development strategies. He has substantial experience working with the highest-quality real estate development. This is not just a council endeavor, however. We will continue to work hard hand-in-hand with our colleagues on the school board. This project calls for unprecedented cooperation. Planning Commission, EDA, and other boards and commissions will also play major roles. Ultimately, this is a community-wide effort, and our citizens have a leading role to play. We have much work to do. I, for one, look forward to the challenge. I'm optimistic for the city's future, and I appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve the citizens of Falls Church. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to make any comments before we get started with our agenda? Okay. So I guess the next thing on the agenda, as I see it, is rules of procedure. And do we have any comments as the rules of procedure before we get started? We can adopt them as they currently are. We can make changes to them if people want to.
Mr. Mayor.
Let's see.
I'm sorry.
Why don't we go to Mr. Z and then to Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations. This is probably, I'm not sure there's much traction to what I propose here, but on lines 294 to 300 with respect to the 10 o'clock vote to continue. As I read this, the plain language says that we can't start anything new after 10 o'clock except for the item that's on the agenda. Now, I've observed in our proceedings that somewhere around 10 o'clock, someone interrupts and say, "We need to vote on continuing past 10 o'clock." And that is contrary to this piece here. Now, I think this piece really doesn't talk so much about a time of 10 o'clock per se, but sets a notional point in time beyond which if we continue, council needs to vote and to recess to continue the following day at 7:30 PM. I don't know who else feels about this the way I do. I don't feel that strongly about it, but you can be sure that if we have this going forward, I will not vote for or against continuing after 10 o'clock, as I have done the last two years. I've not voted once to continue. Actually, I think I voted once not to continue, but that was overruled. We can change this very easily to state at F, at regular meetings, strike everything to an affirmative vote by a majority present to continue add shall cause the meeting to be recessed until the following day at 7:30 PM, and the rest follows as stated. Again, I don't care either way, but I just think we ought to clean this up, and it's kind of a silly provision in our rules of procedure. Thank you, Mayor.
Before we go to Mr. Snyder, does anyone have any comments on Mr. Z's proposed revision?
I have a question for him.
Sure, of course.
Mr. Z, so are you saying that we should change this just to say if we want to end the meeting at 10 o'clock, that's the vote?
No, we, I'm striking all references to 10 PM. Restating this to say that at regular. Restating this to say at regular meeting, an affirmative vote by a majority present to continue shall cause the meeting to be recessed until the following day at 7:30 PM. You strike all references to 10 o'clock. That is to say, if we wish to adjourn at, oh, I don't know, pick a good time, 12:30 the next morning, that we can do so. I mean, I think the language here just states that if there is an adjournment, that we recess until the following day.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any comments? Anyone okay with that? Or do you?
So, Mr. Mayor, let me ask, let me ask you. So by striking this, we're saying that there's no vote, are we saying that there's no, are we saying that there's no vote needed to carry the meeting beyond 10 o'clock? So we're striking the reference to 10? Yeah, I'm trying to understand what the intent is.
I believe the intent was to not consider further business except for minutes without a vote. And so what we've been voting on is continuing to consider business. If that decision is not made, then the meeting would immediately adjourn and continue the next evening at 7:30 PM. This was, I don't remember how it came about. I think it was a recommendation from a council member to try to move the proceedings and not make decisions after 10 PM.
Madam Clerk, I don't think there's any provision in the rest of this procedure. As far as I can tell, this says we need to adjourn at 10 o'clock.
Right.
So my reading.
It's in the absence of a decision to continue the meeting, the meeting would be recessed until the following evening.
Right, I'm proposing we strike that.
Okay. I mean, we could strike the whole provision if, if, I think if you strike some of it, it probably takes out the intent, the original intent anyway, so.
But do we need to say if we recess, that it will adjourn the following day? I remember that having to be in there so that we wouldn't have to publicly notice another meeting.
But you can always do that. I'm sorry.
Yes, you, the clerk's correct. You could always vote to recess until the next day, and you don't have to renotice because the notice is given and anybody should be paying attention who's interested in it. But you could, I think what Mr. Z suggested, although I wasn't quite clear, but I think that's sort of what he suggested was that at regular meetings, if there's a vote, we can recess to the next day. And you could put that in your, you could leave that provision in your procedures. Or if you just strike the provision, you would still be able to recess till the next day if that was the motion and the vote.
I just have a question about the intent on that. Does that mean you would have to have your meeting the next day at 7:30 PM? What if you wanted to recess and do it the following, continue the meeting the following week?
I think you would still be able to do that, but this would just provide an option. But then, so then, striking it might be simpler, and then you wouldn't have any reference at all. But you could always recess to a later date if you needed to.
I would recommend striking the entire provision, but.
Madam Clerk, even better. I propose that we strike lines 294 to 300.
Okay. Mr. Snyder, do you have additional comment?
Sure. I think I actually remember why that was in there, but I don't have any problem striking it. The idea was to try to remind people that it's late, you're better off to make decisions earlier rather than later, but I see no reason to keep it in, so I would personally be fine striking it. I did want to make a comment on line 135, where you talk about the work session to the council shall be held in the Dog Room or this council chamber in view of the fact that we're meeting in the community center. I wanted to prove that I read this.
Thank you.
And that it might be entirely relevant if we added or some language about community center or other noticed provision during the renovation of city hall.
Section 145.
Yeah.
Otherwise noticed.
Yeah.
Councilmember Snyder, could we not rename this place Dogwood?
All right. Other comments on these rules of procedure? Let me ask the city attorney, do we have to actually come up with the exact language? Can we just tell you the concept that we want to do and?
You can tell us the concept if you like.
I think you've heard, I think you've heard from our two colleagues.
Well, and so I would ask, if you're gonna revise the language about work sessions, do you also want to revise the language about regular meetings, which says you meet in council chamber?
Should we read that part?
Yeah.
We can, we can adjust them both to reflect that, an alternative location during the renovation.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly.
My memory of the rules of procedure is that what we have done, the last two times I've done this at least, is that after this meeting is over, then the government operations committee or another committee would review it and see if there are other larger changes to make and come back within three months or so. Is that what has happened in the past?
Yes.
Yes. So I suggest we do that as well.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Do we, the city attorney, could we take a voice vote on this? We want a roll call vote?
A roll call vote.
Okay.
Sorry.
Want a motion then?
I need a motion.
Okay. Let's get a motion on the table.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the, the resolution adopting rules of procedure for the city council of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, effective on January 2, 2018, with two changes, deletion of section, well, deletion of lines 294 through 301, and the revision in lines 135 to 138, and wherever else specific location is mentioned to add the community center during the course of renovation.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan.
Yes.
Ms. Hardy.
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. Z.
Yes.
Mayor Tartar.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Carries seven to zero.
Okay. Before we go into work session, are there any council member comments? Or I'm sorry, you had something you wanted to say?
Yes, I believe, although this is a work session, there were, there was a citizen who had a comment. I don't know if you want to entertain Mr. Henderson.
Sure, of course.
I think gave me the high sign. Were you, did you have a citizen comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure. Come on up. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. I'm Nikki Graves Henderson. I live at 307 South Maple Avenue, and I am here in the capacity of the co-chairperson of the Social Justice Committee of Falls Church and Vicinity. On Saturday, I'm sorry, Sunday, January 7, at 1 PM, the public, and especially you all, are invited to join us, the Social Justice Committee, whose mission is hope, respect, and healing, along with the Falls Church Police Department, the Falls Church Police Anniversary Badge Committee, as well as Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation at the Falls Church Community Center, to introduce the newly designed police officer's 2018 anniversary badges. They recognize not only the 70th anniversary of the Falls Church Police Department, but also the service to the city and symbolizes the city's lead values of equality, hope, and justice. They will be unveiled, and the community and spiritual leaders will perform a ceremonial blessing of the badges, the officers who wear them, and the community that they serve. Following the ceremony, the Falls Church and Vicinity Social Justice Committee will meet to begin planning a citywide event that will join the growing movement of reconciliation and justice in the City of Falls Church and adjacent communities. The badge ceremony, again, is on Sunday, January 7, from 1 to 2, here at the Falls Church Community Center. It will be followed by the Social Justice Planning Committee meeting from 2 to 4 here at the community center. It is free and open to the public, and we hope that you will join us.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Okay. Hi, my name is Edwin Henderson. I, too, am from 307 South Maple Avenue. And congratulations to, oh, you all are the same as we were last time, but congratulations just the same. What I wanted to say was that we're gonna do this again. This is gonna be the second annual Martin Luther King Day Jr. March for Unity, Racial Healing, and Justice. And last time, we did it at council chambers. I guess we won't be doing it there this time. So what we've, what we've done is we have secured the Falls Church to have the ceremony, the forum there. It'll be much smaller this time, maybe four or five. But the challenge this year was to reroute the marching. And I'm gonna tell you right off, you know, like, what I would like to do is to march, close off Lee Highway and march from our monument to the Falls Church. Three blocks, okay? 15 minutes, that's all it would take. But I'll talk to the police department, and we'll come up with a plan, and we'll abide by whatever those plans are. And so I'd like to invite all of you all, you know, to come out. Even if it's a cold day, it's only a short walk, and then you'll be inside again. And, you know, we have a, you know, this is one year since the Trump election. We still have a lot to march about, you know? So let's get out and let's raise our voices and let's protest and let's talk about what needs to be done in this country still. A large part of that is gonna be going along with what my wife is doing with the Social Justice Committee as far as racial reconciliation and healing in this country. And no better day to do that than on Martin Luther King's birthday. And it's actually on Martin Luther King's birthday, because the 15th was his birthday. So I just wanted to say that, invite you all to come out. I'd like to see everybody there. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and more. So let's advertise this and let's get people out there. We had about 600 last year. I'd like to meet or exceed that this year. So thanks, thanks for giving me some time.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Oh, Mr. Henderson, don't leave yet. I just have a question. This is Mrs. Connolly here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Oh, was that funny?
I hear the speakers. I don't know where it's coming from. Yes.
Thank you for doing this again. This was a wonderful event last year, and I'm really glad that it will happen again this year. I'm wondering if you have promotional materials and things that we can share on our own social media to help you with publicity?
Do you need something electronic?
I need electronic stuff. Can you share that?
I have this electronic.
Yeah.
But, and I can send this to you now. Where do I send it?
Will you send it to the clerk? And then she'll forward it to?
Okay.
And then we'll make sure that we help you promote this as well.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Yes, or I will. I can't speak for everyone else, but I will do that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Hardy, I guess you're also organizing the council's day of service as well on that.
Yes, while we're on the topic of MLK Junior Day, this will be our second annual day of service across the City of Falls Church. And so we are organizing a service project currently with home stretch from 9 to 11 o'clock on that day. Hopefully, all of council will join us again this year. I'd like to also extend the invite to anyone in the public to join us. I think last year, we had a few members of the planning commission and some youth reps. And so once we have the details officially sorted out, we'll send an invitation to our school board colleagues, the planning commission, the boards and commissions, to all join us for the service event. And then that'll be in plenty of time to wrap up for the march.
Thank you very much, and thanks for organizing that.
One more plug. I think next week, we have members of the elementary PTA coming to speak about their service event. So if you happen to have kids in the school system, they're organizing what they call Give Day. And so they all have a service project happening at TJ Elementary. So you all have your choice of many different service projects. Hopefully, members of the community will be able to think beyond themselves and think about a way to give back on a day of service on January 15.
All right. Thank you very much. Before we move on to work session, are there any other council member comments? Vice Mayor Connolly, of course.
I would like to thank so many people in Falls Church for the watch night celebration on New Year's Eve. There were so many staff there. Ms. Mester was there in the freezing cold for a long time, as well as our police, our volunteer firefighters. A lot of staff were there, the public work staff. There were tons of volunteers, sponsors, lots of sponsors made it happen, many community members. It was really cold outside, but the inside venues were well-attended, and at midnight, there was a nice crowd. At midnight, the bands were great. Keith Thurston was the eyes on the ground for Barb Cram, who was texting and emailing from her house and watching on Facebook and monitoring how it was all going. But I, it was the 20th anniversary of Watch Night, and despite the cold temperatures, it was very well-attended and well-done. So my great appreciation to those who were there for many hours. I came in and out, but there were a lot of people who were there for a long time in the cold to ring in 2018, and we have a lot to look forward to.
That's good. That's right. Any other comments before we move on to the work session?
Just don't forget, don't forget Ross Hall the Wood Littenhouse and his critical role in keeping us all warm by the warming stations, which were a very popular site when I was there. Yeah.
The rookie assignment. All right. All right. All right. Anything else before we move on? All right, let's go ahead and move on to the work session portion of tonight's meeting. The first item is appointment to council of liaisons to committees and other boards and commissions. I think that the idea tonight would not necessarily be to, for everyone to pick everything and get it totally resolved, but just have some discussion, A, about particular changes people might want to make, and B, if there's any idea in terms, in light of the fact that there's gonna be a lot of work with the campus site, whether we want to maybe change the expectations to some degree as to the role of liaisons during this next period when we may have a lot of other things going on. So does anyone have any comments on either one of those, either changes they want to make, things they would like to do, things they don't? The first item is appointment to council of liaisons to committees and other boards and commissions. I think that the idea tonight would not necessarily be to, for everyone to pick everything and get it totally resolved, but just have some discussion, A, about particular changes people might want to make, and B, if there's any idea in terms, in light of the fact that there's going to be a lot of work with the campus site, whether we want to maybe change the expectations to some degree as to the role of liaisons during this next period, when we may have a lot of other things going on. So does anyone have any comments on either one of those, either changes they want to make, things they would like to do, things they don't want to do anymore? Maybe the idea would be, after tonight's meeting, you could email Celeste with any changes you want to make to what you're doing now, things you're interested in, things you want to get off of, and we could try to get this settled by next week's meeting and vote on it. Does anybody have any particular comments? Vice Mayor Connolly, you have that look?
I do, but I'm just looking.
I think you're it.
So there are a lot of board and commission assignments here, as well as out of city liaisons to different regional bodies. As one who's served, I've served on a good number of committees, some for two years and some for four years. And I find it really helpful to be able to attend those meetings and find out what's going on. At the same time, it does get to be a lot when there are so many meetings in the course of a month. And if we're talking about adding additional ones to work on the campus project, I do feel like we need to take a look at those and work on council expectations. Because I would hate to say there won't be council liaisons to all these boards and commissions, because I do feel like there's a lot of really important community information that comes out of them and that council can share with citizens. But I think perhaps if the expectation is that you attend a meeting quarterly, or you're available as needed, or we can work on those expectations, one of the things that I'd like to do is align the work of the boards and commissions to the vision statement that council approved last year, so that we're all rowing in the same direction and working on projects together, rather than all different groups trying to work on different things. So I think that is something that, as we head into our council retreat in February, we need to work on aligning the expectations of all these boards and commissions. I think that may help the whole big picture.
Other, Mr. Littenhouse?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Carter. Just a quick question and clarification. We've got this nice flow chart here for the Campus Coordinating Committee, which I think why it came from your office. I have an interest in that just naturally through my professional, my day job. Do we have an idea in terms of commitment, from a schedule perspective, as to when that group would be meeting, interacting with most of the other committees?
We envision the coordinating committee meeting probably twice a month. And there may be times when, when the work will be a little bit slower than that in the process. And there may be times when it's busier, based on sort of the cycle of work that we'll need that's laid out in our roadmap, roadmap for the project.
Okay.
But two months, two meetings a month, I think is probably a good rule of thumb.
Okay.
I mean, I think, to me, at least my expectation, I guess that's the main body. But I believe there'll likely be task force or subcommittees which may meet more frequently, and people may be on multiple
That's right.
task force that could end up meeting much more than twice a month.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I ask to be, to be honest, is that, you know, you've got a lot of crossover from even some of the folks that are going to be involved in the committees and the boards and the liaisons with some of these other, with some of these other groups, and just wondering in terms of the commitment, because assigning yourself to be a liaison to economic development, I'm sure is going to naturally be involved in the meetings that we have for this coordinated committee to some extent. So just trying to get an idea of where that crossover is going to take place.
In terms of the actual meetings, most of the meetings, the boards and commission meetings are in the evening. I suspect, I would think the majority, or at least many of the meetings relating to the campus project will be during the day, possibly in the morning. Or at least that's how we've done meetings in the past. So in terms of actual conflicts with time, I don't, I'm not sure there'll be as many. But I do think as far as overall commitment, it's substantial. You know, I mean, particularly right now, the concept is that, you know, you attend a fair amount of the meetings that you're a liaison to. And that can be a fairly large time commitment, particularly if you add in campus meetings as well. And so I at least wanted to broach, broach the idea of, you know, do we want to change the expectations to some degree? Do we want, as Vice Mayor Connolly said, maybe you attend a meeting a quarter, or you're available, or you come to the beginning of the meeting, you leave, or you, you know, you just come as needed? I don't know what the expectations we want to set, but I think we ought to at least have a conversation about that.
I mean, I know I'm the new guy, but I'm just, just in terms of what's happening with, with the campus. I mean, I think that commitment from a time perspective is going to be substantial. So, you know, serving as liaison and kind of as needed, if there are questions that need to be brought back to council, would make a lot of sense. Obviously, I think there's, there are some that would probably require more in-person commitment. But when you, when you just consider all of the projects that are taking place with the campus, I would think it's more of a liaison as needed. But it's obviously just my opinion.
Ms. Hardy?
So I'm fine with revisiting the expectations for liaison, but I would also say that while the campus project is clearly important undertaking for the city, the rest of the city business doesn't stop. So we still have economic development, for example, happening through the rest of the city. So I could see the leads on to the EDA still being pretty active. The EDC, for example, is still being very active. And so I think we'll just have to figure out the right structure, that matrices across that thing, that doesn't, I guess, abandon a lot of the boards and commissions. So I do think that has been a really critical role. I've certainly enjoyed it, but I do know that I personally am gone at least three nights a week because of my commitment to show up at every one of their meetings. And so that may change depending on the council member, but I just want people to know that. And for boards and commissions and people who are involved in the city, we are not forgetting about you just because we are taking on a big campus project. It is very important for the city, but at the same time, a big part of our job is also being connected to the community.
Other, any other, Vice Mayor, or Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm happy with my assignments on, you know, I would make life easy on, on others here. Just keep Danzy on those current slots. That'd be fine. I've built relationships, and I sort of agree with Councilmember Hardy that. Things like the Retirement Board, the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation, the Library Board, these are all the, these make up the fabric of our city. And I, the role of liaison is not necessarily one that has to attend every meeting or be full up on all the events and nuances of, of these particular matters. But, you know, quite frankly, they need someone to be able to reach out and contact and carry the water for them. You know, I think, I fear that by default, if some of these slots are empty, then, you know, the mayor will be automatically assigned to staffing all those slots. And I would be happy to recommend that they do that as well. So I think it's, we need to have someone in every slot just to act as role of liaison. And how that person defines liaison is up to them. I would say that, you know, for example, Phil Duncan is Falls Church Access Cable Board engagement is probably coming to an end fairly soon, so that frees him up to do other stuff. I'd be happy to suggest some slots for him. And obviously, the, the Library Board is going to have lots of things going on soon with regard to the passage of the bond referendum, and there are going to be financial and operational issues. So who knows? That might be a good fit for Mr. Duncan. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any, since I've been volunteered into, I think what Mr. Z said has some merit. Just looking at the page 23, you know, our assignment from last time, the challenge that we face, I think, is that Ms. Oliver's departure creates vacancies on, as Mr. Z said, some of the key groups, you know, transportation, library. Of course, they're all important, but Architects Advisory Board. And Ms. Oliver is a pretty faithful attender of the groups to which she was liaison. So this kind of carries me back to when I first started, where the rule was you put in for things you're interested in, and then everybody ends up taking one or two things that maybe are not in their natural wheelhouse also. So as you all do your wish list, you might think about, you know, first choice. And here are other things that I could do if I, I think that's how I got on the Board of Equalization, which is not anything that I have any special expertise in. I've never had a chance to go to one of their meetings. I've talked a little bit with folks. But at any rate, I do think it's important that we try to touch base with these groups, you know, at least every month in some way, if it's not attending the meeting. Maybe a conversation, some structured, you know, interaction. One possible reform might be if we could tell all the boards and commissions that their council liaison would be happy to attend if we could be asked whatever it is that we are needing to be asked about in the first half hour or so of their meeting. So if their agendas could be arranged so that, you know, the council member could bank on getting there at 7:30 and getting out by 8:00, that might help the scheduling matter some. I haven't really thought about which groups I would like to continue on with, but I expect I'll probably end up with, you know, like I say, a couple that I'm first choice and a couple that are things that might not normally be my first choice.
You might want to consider as well is just a schedule for getting the boards and commissions back in front of council. So we've done the joint meetings. I don't know whether we hit everyone last year. That certainly was the hope, is that we would have a chance to meet with every board and commission as part of a work session. But I want to make sure that we're doing that for this year as well, and maybe put together a schedule.
I believe, and government operations has, we've started working on that, so hopefully we'll continue to work on that.
Okay. All right, is there anything else to be said about the boards and commissions at this point? Of course.
So I just want to know what the directions are to the seven of us. We need to, if, take a look at this chart on page 23, indicate your first, second, and third choice. Is that? Or indicate three that are your top choice, and three that would be your second choice. And then we'll fill it in from there. And then also taking into consideration that some of them meet at the same time, so we wouldn't assign.
And the city meetings, obviously, your committee meeting times can change.
Right.
Most of the boards and commissions won't change.
Right, the boards and commissions will stay. Right, right. So, and, right, and we've been talking about the local boards and commissions, but we also have the regional ones and COG, and that we also need to play out. And I know Ms. Oliver had a few roles on those as well.
And we have some alternates on those as well, which are helpful because you don't go to every meeting, but you do get called on.
Right.
And get to get in the mix a little bit.
Okay.
We are sending an agenda package for Monday's meeting, next Monday's meeting, Thursday afternoon, so that's, tomorrow's Wednesday. We're gonna, so if you can think about it tomorrow, and sooner than later.
So you need something by the end of the day tomorrow?
That would be great, but Thursday, midday, at the latest, so we can put something together.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be final. It's just your top choices and ones. And if you're on one that you'd like to stay on, indicate that. If you're on one that you think you've been on enough and someone else should have a turn, indicate that. There's some that I've been on that I really enjoyed, but I think it'd be great if someone else took a turn there, just to find out exactly what that group is doing, or what else is happening in this piece of the city that you don't often see. So, okay, so the end of the day tomorrow.
That would be great, yes. That would be very helpful.
Mr. Duncan?
Could I just, one other thing I wanted to say. Vice Mayor and I spoke a little earlier about the Budget and Finance Committee particularly. This, I guess, will solve itself if, you know, when everybody submits their list, there's enough people to fill all these spots. But one idea I'd throw out for consideration is whether we might somehow rearrange the Budget and Finance Committee's calendar or schedule so that it's not a monthly meeting that has to be scheduled, but rather could be perhaps quarterly activity, or maybe merged with economic development, so you'd have, you know, development and finance. Something that would cut down on the number of meetings, particularly early morning meetings, that, that we have to get to. Those two committees have some similarities. One, one earns the money, and the other budgets the money, so that's just a thought. If, if there, you know, are three or four people who are just dying to serve on Budget Finance, then I guess it becomes its own thing again. But if not, maybe that could be considered for consolidation.
Anything else? Yeah, of course.
Regarding Budget and Finance, the way that has been structured the last two years with the Chair and Vice Chair of the School Board, and the Superintendent, and the CFO of the schools involved, I think has been really helpful as, just for sharing information back and forth. So if, if the Budget and Finance Committee changes, I think there does need to be some sort of group that is working on a regular basis with the School Board and City Council and staff, just to be sharing that kind of financial information, which is always helpful come budget time.
Okay. Unless there's anything else, why don't we move on to the camp?
I, I have one thing. The NVTA, Mr. Snyder is the member. That's correct, right? You're the representative. And they're having a meeting Friday. We got notice?
Right. I sent a note to Phil Duncan. Phil will be able to cover that as the alternate.
And you were the s- I have Karen Oliver as the alternate on that one.
We worked this out, didn't we, at the end of last year?
That was NV, was that NVTC?
Oh, gosh. Cindy, you'll have to tell me.
Yeah, we did work it out so Mr. Duncan could do NVTC meeting, but this is NVTA Friday morning. And Phil is available to cover, but we will need to have him be an alternate to cover. And you wanted to bring up the question about them continuing until the formal vote on the meeting.
Right. But Mr. Duncan wasn't appointed as an alternate, so.
Not to NVTA, so we'll need to address that, because he's the PCAC member, and they couldn't be normally the same person.
Oh, really?
Yes, the PCAC member by the bylaws of NVTA cannot be the alternate to NVTA.
Well, okay.
That solves that one.
But we would like to have council representation Friday morning.
At the Friday meeting. I'm not sure how to solve that one.
Do you need voting representation, or just?
Yeah.
So would you like to appoint an alternate just for that meeting?
Does anybody else want to be on the NVTA? I mean, I only volunteered because I just am sort of accustomed to trying to fill the gap there, but I mean, NVTA is a good group, and I don't, I deliberately got off of being the alternate and let Karen do it last time, because what Mary Beth said, I thought.
Well, you're not technically the PCAC representative anymore, correct? As of December 31?
Depending on council's action on whether they continue till new appointments. NVTA will defer to council who your representatives are. But the agenda does look like there's some voting action, and council visibility on behalf of the city is valuable.
And to further complicate things, NVTC meets on Thursday night, so. So maybe we need a formal action by the council on these two. Let me, let me propose this action. I move that the City Council appoint Phil Duncan as the alternate for NVTA and NVTC, and Snyder as the, as the main member for NVTA and NVTC.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Phil, do you object?
Seriously, don't be shy if you're interested. I'm looking at Ms. Hardy, I'm looking at Ms. Littenhouse, you know, about putting in for that, because I could certainly step aside. And it is a bit much to be the, the alternate to both, because Mr. Snyder does a lot of work in this area, and I know how much work it is. And, and I also, you know, do try to go to a number of the liaison assignments that I have. And anyway, just don't be shy about expressing interest in it. I'll take it.
I think they're avoiding eye contact, so I think.
Council could also consider at your, on the 8th, when you do all the other appointments, you could make adjustments to that if it seemed appropriate in light of everything else you do. But take this action tonight to make sure you're covered for your meetings.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the table?
And so is this, do you want to put a date on the appointment? That's the only thing. Just make this the annual appointment, or, or a temporary?
Go ahead, just make it the regular appointment, and then it can be changed later if council so votes. So, but let's just make it a regular appointment.
Okay.
Okay.
We can consider it again next week if they want to make a change.
All right, let's go ahead and take the vote on it then.
Sure. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion carries, and I will let the NVTA and NVTC know.
I want to move on to the Campus Coordinating Committee. Mr. Shields, why don't you give us an update of where you think things are and where we need to go?
Thank you, Mayor Carter. The request tonight is for council just to review what we've proposed here in terms of a structure for making sure that the economic development project and the school project go together in a synchronized and well-coordinated fashion. There are several components to this. First, in terms of lines of statutory authority, the City Council has authority to appropriate the funds, authorize the debt, and do all the land use activities, or land use approvals for the entire campus. The School Board's area of responsibility is for the school curriculum, the school programmatic goals, and the school construction contract. As you know, the City, the School Board has already issued RFQ. It's the first phase in the procurement for the design-build contract for the high school. The city is in the process of updating the comp plan. The city is in the process of updating the comp plan. The School Board has reviewed the comp plan amendment. Boards and commissions are reviewing it right now, and that will come back to the City Council at the end of January for action. In addition, the Economic Development piece for the City Council, we have your work session on January 16th. It's principally geared towards campus planning. We will have our team there with you to review the roadmap, to review the draft RFQ for taking the property to market, and we will have a discussion about the marketing strategy that will unfold over the next 18 months, but really have some critical points with a marketing roadshow in February and the issuance of the RFQ in March. So we want to get that RFQ out early so people can see it, comment on it, and have it be a good document that we feel very comfortable with as an initial draft for the February Marketing Roadshow, and then ready for authorization to issue in March. So the Coordinating Committee, the request for Counsel is to discuss this tonight and to take action at your meeting, at your regular meeting next week, if that's the Council's pleasure. The Campus Coordinating Committee, what its scope of work would be, or what its area of focus would be, is the big issues that have to be worked out in a coordinated fashion. So that's the design of the interface areas. That's maintaining project schedules so that the schedules stay in sync with each other. Working out the engineering and design of the shared infrastructure, so the location of roads, the location of shared sanitary sewer, and other infrastructure that's going to serve both the school and the economic development. Exploring opportunities for shared parking. Work on the joint financial planning for the project as a whole, as well as the reporting on the project as a whole. Coordinate messaging on the project. Our intent and what we will do is keep the public informed continuously through these projects, and this Coordinating Committee is a good place to make sure that we are getting that communication done appropriately. Now, the Campus Coordinating Committee has a proposed membership that's shown here in this chart, but as the mayor noted, this is an all-hands-on-deck effort. We anticipate that there will be the need for expertise that's at this table and in the community to work with staff on specific things, like the marketing of the property. Working on some of the transportation issues associated with access to the property. Continuing our work with the universities in Womata and Fairfax County. I think there's a role for a task force in that. The evaluation team, when we get to that point, and the financial planning team. So these are just examples of other task force or teams that could be constituted. We are anticipating, or I am proposing that those teams be a bit more informal than the Coordinating Committee, so they can move quickly and help the City Council. The job really is to help the City Council ultimately with the key decisions that have to be made along the path of this project. So that's an introduction of it, and I'll turn it over now to the Counsel. This has been out there for about a month and a half as a proposed idea, so I don't think this is new information, but would like to get your comments and any other thoughts on this and discussion of scheduling this for formal action.
So, comments, questions? Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm serving in on lines 115 through 117. That read with lines 85 through 86, so as the City Manager said, "The committee is advisory to the City Manager and Superintendent in their development recommendations to the Council and School Board, and it is set up primarily to facilitate coordinated decisions by the governing bodies." So it comes up with recommendations, I assume, that will be acted upon by the City Council and School Board. And also, in 110 through 113, it talks about establishing appropriate staff, in particular project managers on both city and school side, to support the work of the committee. You've left it open here in lines 72 through 75, where there could be, as far as the how of how these, of how this, the how of the operations of this coordinating committee, that there would be the establishment of subcommittees, in particular use of, as you characterize it, task force, but it would be composed of interested citizens, subject matter experts, people that have general interests and knowledge to share. Not exactly sure what you mean by less formal, but I suppose that could be worked out. I think my primary comment at this point is that, is that the roles and responsibilities, and in particular the charter establishes the roles and responsibilities, are not clear to me. I don't see a charter in here. I don't see an objective other than forming recommendations. I don't see who has responsibility for what and what the roles are. I think that needs to be clear. This is just way too important to be left to some mishmash of some coordinating committee to, you know, cream rising to the top after much discussion. I think that the things that require coordination and deliberation and decisions to be made aren't going to be very long-term things. Things are going to come up and say, "You need to work on this right now." And I don't see a structure that handles this in terms of, again, roles and responsibilities, a charter, and how we use subject matter expert groups. I think these things need to be put into here. I would say that you ought to be the guy that puts that together, along with the school Superintendent. There needs to be a little bit clarity, more clarity than the purpose of coordination. Coordination, advice, I suppose at the end of all that, you need to establish a procedure on how advice is either ignored or implemented. There are a lot of things here that I think that the citizens of the city would like to see additional detail on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other, Ms. Lickenhouse?
Could I just speak to a couple of the points? Those are, I think, very good points, but I wanted to just share with the Counsel some of the thinking that went behind this charter as it is, as a coordinating committee that is advisory. This is a project that is so important for the city that I think it's very important to keep the lines of accountability and the lines of responsibility clear. And ultimately, they lie with the City Council in terms of the votes that you will take at the various different steps of this process. They lie with the City Manager in the quality of the recommendations we give to the City Council before you make those decisions. If there are different groups out there that have formal authorities or formal decision-making responsibility, concern, I think, would be that that might blur those lines as to where the accountability ultimately does lie. The purpose of this is to ensure that when things come to the Council, there aren't unresolved issues that are landed in your lap in a kind of a raw and unstudied way. That instead, when you get a, you know, to a point where you have to make a decision on, as a part of the process, that these types of coordinating issues have actually already been vetted, they've been worked through. There might still be some live conflict, but at least we'll know exactly what those are, and ultimately, before we take the next step in the process, the Council will know what those points of conflicts are, ensure that they get resolved, and then take the formal actions on them. That's why it is proposed in this way.
Got a question.
Of course.
So there's been some discussion previously about a project executive, someone that was kind of that central holder of truth and information amongst all the various entities. Has that kind of gone to the wayside? Because I see we have a project manager that's contracted. Is that a PM that comes with whoever the general contractor is that we hire for the school designing construction? Is that what that, when you say contracted, that's what we mean?
Well, there'll be two. So there's one on the school's side, and that is, would be the owner's rep and their project manager, and that'd be a contract position. On the city's side, we are in the process of hiring a, and bringing onboard a project manager on our side. The PM for that is going to be a procurement specialist, a person who understands how to take a property to market in order to accomplish public goals. It's an individual who's done that in his career and understands that process. That person will be part of, will lead our team on our side and help sort of run the logistics of the several hundred decisions that need to be made as we move along.
So that's the project manager that you have in the green box here under Economic Development? So that's internal, and then we've got a project manager that comes along with who we've hired, just on the school designing construction? Right?
It's not, the school's project manager is not going to be an employee of the firm that does the design-build. Instead, it's an independent person who's hired to be the school's owner's representative. Currently, that function has been fulfilled by Arcadis. The schools are in a procurement process right now, and a decision will be made soon on their, who their owner's rep or project manager will be.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, the schools are hiring, third-party.
Yes.
Project manager, and then we've got a project manager that you guys are going to be hiring that's going to be working at City Hall, that would be on the Economic Development piece?
That's correct.
Correct, okay, but there is nobody that that funnels up to? Those individuals effectively coordinate within these three boxes here and then report?
That is correct. So what we, what this does not stand for is one executive that oversees both the entire thing. And that has been discussed, that's been explored, but our thinking is that the skill set to build a school and the skill set to take 10 acres of land and to market it and to have it be developed for gain are two different skill sets, and we'd be better served with those two project managers.
So my only, I mean, I get that, because they're two separate huge endeavors. My concern is the coordination between both project managers, just making sure that that communication isn't happening through the three, four, 10 people that are sitting in the coordinating committee, right? That they're not sitting and operating in a vacuum, essentially, and waiting to report to the committee, which then reports back up to...
No, they're going to interact with each other every day.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Conley?
Mr. Shields, on this picture, then, what you really need is a bridge here between the two project managers, that's a direct line or some kind of arrow between them so that it's obvious on this chart and to everyone that those two people will be working very closely together on many issues. Not every issue, but many issues.
I think that's true. And I think another point on that is that the staff team and the school staff team, we're also going to be interacting with each other every day, and it's not going to be exclusively through the Campus Coordinating Committee. That's not going to be the only place where interaction is occurring, but the Campus Coordinating Committee is intended to be the place where the big issues do get worked out, because there are issues where our staff are going to have really strong opinions about, and the school staff are going to have different very strong opinions about, and it's good to have a good forum where those can be worked out. And it should be pretty public, and the Council and School Board should be, you know, a party to those discussions. That's what the structure would provide.
So, Ms. Hardy, I'm sorry.
So on that point, so I've always been the fan of the project executive, but I'm fine with not having it. I think it's important to just get this committee up and going. I think especially if we are expecting that the project managers from both work streams are interacting daily, and then the big decisions are worked through this Campus Coordinating Committee. I think the sooner we get up and running, the better. I think it clearly needs to be in place already. I agree that I would like to see a charter and kind of being more clearly spelling out that it is advisory, what the roles and expectations are, whether there's voting or not voting. I think those details are important, just to make sure that we're setting them up for success from the beginning.
I have a couple of comments, if no one else has anything right now. One, when do you anticipate, if this isn't any confidence that you can't say, but when do you anticipate hiring the city PM?
We expect that the PM will be onboard on January 16th.
Okay, and have you hired that person yet, or?
We're in the final stages of that.
Okay. All right, I've got a couple other thoughts. One, I think it'd be really good if we can outline a timetable for public comment, public input, so that it's not an afterthought, but in fact goes along with our schedule so that we would say, you know, "February, we're going to do this, and January, whatever, we're going to allow for public comment so that people can participate in what we're about to do," so that it's not just something we try to jam in there. "Well, we only got a week, we better have a whatever." I mean, I'd really like this to be part and parcel of what we do and really laid out a timetable for public outreach, town halls, or whatever we want to do. This is too important not to involve the public in every step of this, in my opinion.
Well, I think a good opportunity for that would be, the Council will review the draft RFQ at your January 16th meeting, and then very soon after that, have a public meeting on that so that it's early, and then we would anticipate going through the engagement with the development community. They will also have a lot of comment on the draft RFQ, we believe, and then come back to the public in February with any changes, alterations to that draft RFQ, so the public has a second chance to spend time with it and comment on it prior to the Council's authorizing its release in March.
So I guess I was thinking beyond that, just through the whole process, like to try to build in to a timeframe like this, when we anticipate, doesn't have to be exact date, but just, you know, town hall before we do this action, just that we know we want, or I think we know, we want to have input at key times, and instead of just sort of as an afterthought, or "We've got to jam it in here, we're running late, boy, we don't have time for this," I think it's important that we just set out a schedule of, you know, "We're going to have six town halls over the next six months," or whatever it is, to talk about an RFQ, to talk about the RFP, or whatever it is. I just think we ought not to have that as an afterthought, but as a forethought. I have a couple other comments or thoughts. So in looking at this, whatever you call it, structure, it looks like, as it stands now, the City Council folks, there's two of them in the center, but like Economic Development, would that all be just essentially a staff team that wouldn't be any elected or appointed people, and looking at the left side of the chart, for example?
Yeah, the staff team is, that's just as a matter of course. We have, I'm envisioning that there is going to be a great deal of daily staff work on this project, and the coordinating, but, and that's just in the natural course of advancing a project like this.
But so you don't envision any council directors?
Well, so in terms of the task teams that are off on the left-hand side, I think that those are some areas that we've identified where it'd be good to have council involved and other members of the community involved as we're working these issues. There's a balance of having so many groups that, the balance between efficiency of decision-making and making sure that there's good inclusiveness, and we're getting everybody's talents to get to the best decisions. So there's probably a limit to how many of these task forces we can have. I think we should be strategic about the ones that really need the most help with and the most, you know, the most talent that we can bring to the table to work those issues.
I mean, it seems to me with respect to either the task force or the structure, I mean, I think it'd be great if we could get nearly everyone in council to have some area that they're directly involved with. One particular area of expertise or interest or whatever. I think we all, as I mentioned earlier tonight, have some unique experiences and talents that can be brought to bear, and I think that filters down to the community as well, so that it's not just council people, but in terms of you have expertise in boards and commissions, and then you have expertise and interest in the community. And so I think these task force are opportunities, and I understand your concern about, I mean, it's spread out so much that it just makes it hard to get things done, but I think to the extent this is an advisory role, in other words, you know, bringing forth information and ideas, it may have a different structure. It's not really, it's more an advisory than decision-making body. So I think we really need to give some thought to task force or whatever this side group is going to be called, to make sure we capture the talents of council, boards and commissions, and the community. I don't know if people have thoughts on either the ones that are here... I don't know if people have thoughts on either the ones that are here, additional ones that we might want to have, particular interest of anyone on council?
Well, just, Mayor, just with regard to that thought, the first one that comes to mind is that, as we all know, we have a very engaged citizen here and they'll tell you if you're not doing enough to involve them. I think that for the most part, they understand this is the kind of effort that does need to be managed and has its own rhythm and pace. And so another way of saying that is that they need to be part of the action or they need to step aside. I certainly understand your point about having too many or too large a number of people involved in this, but I think that those people that bring skills and capabilities to this effort will be self-selecting and they understand how it gets done. Having said that, I think that they will bring stuff, suggestions, they might write entire sections on evaluation criteria and selection criteria under, selection, points of selection, selection criteria under the evaluation. And so that causes a natural question to arise, which is that who do they provide these to? I mean, I would assume a bunch of these things would not go in some source sequence, which I think addresses the mayor's comment that we need to have a more definitive timetable. Would it go to the project managers on either side or would it go to the coordinating committee? I think, you know, these kinds of things have yet to be worked out, you know, because these terms, support, coordination, facilitation, they're great words, but I think that people will want to know what they mean. And that really was a thrust to my original comment with regard to more definition on this process going forward. Thanks.
Ms. Hardy?
I just wanted to echo what the mayor said about opportunity for public input because I think I made a similar request at our last meeting. So if I could just be more explicit, Mr. Shields, by our January 8th meeting, could we have a town hall scheduled to follow our January 16th work session? And then as part of that schedule, also lay out the schedule for future town halls for, say, the next six months? And we can present in the town hall, hey, here are all the opportunities where you'll learn about this phase of the project, here's where you'll comment, just so that we provide people a very comprehensive look that we intend to engage the community throughout the process. But let's get a date on the calendar soon because I know we'll have other things on there if we don't. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
And I'm going to forth that because that was my first comment that I wrote down is that we need a schedule. We always do a nice job with the budget schedule to show all the town hall meetings and all the options, and I feel like we just need to do that for the next year, even building in at where these task teams are going to go. Where, you know, the marketing pre-RFQ team, that's got a pretty short window, but a really intense window. So we need to build that into the calendar, too. This is when this is going to happen. As far as public comment, one of the things that in our process leading up to the referendum that was frustrating to many people was that things happened and then there wasn't a video of the meeting or the minutes were kind of there-ish and we weren't memorializing things as we went along, even though our different working groups have been doing a lot of work. So I also want to make sure that as we're doing these things, there's somebody who's taking minutes at the meetings because I don't think that's been happening with the different working groups, right? We don't have any official minutes afterwards.
I think there are the economic working group.
Yeah, the economic working group has kept a record
Okay.
of all the points of discussion.
Okay. Has there been any thought to videotaping the meetings or making them available that way? Because what my concern is that people may not pay attention in March, but they might be interested in June. And again, we don't, they need to have that history there, that memorialized history of what's been done between January and June to be able to go and learn it instead of just trying to figure it all out. So I feel like we need to really make an intentional effort to memorialize as we go along this big project so that you can plug in at any point and be educated on what has been, happened so far and what will be happening.
The coordinating committee in particular is envisioned to be a public body with advanced notice of its meetings and good, clear, legible records of its meetings because that'll be part of the public communication plan of the meeting is the record of its meetings. I think when I speak of the more informal structure of the task groups, I'm a little worried about keeping sort of detailed notes of all of those task forces. For instance, if one of the task forces to improve, you know, to work with Fairfax County, well, that's going to involve a lot of meetings with people just to keep people briefed. And there might be discussions that, you know, it's just not well-suited to having, you know, a great record of those types of meetings because they're going to be more exploratory and just building relationships. And so that's kind of what was intended by the idea of the task force, you know, those teams as being more informal.
So I wasn't actually thinking about minutes for the task team meetings, but just the fact that they even exist. I mean, there are people that are going to say, oh, why aren't they talking to Fairfax County? Well, they are talking to Fairfax County, but there's no way to memorialize that along the way and say, this is the task team that is tasked with that. And if you do have questions, talk to Mr. Snyder who's on the Fairfax Outreach Committee or, I just, it's that kind of memorializing that I think is really important so that there are a lot of ways people can plug into what's going on.
So I've got, just a concern after hearing and talking through this is that we still don't have someone at the top that is essentially herding all of the cats, right? I mean, you've got all of these folks that, side task force going through the coordinating committee, separate project managers that have to be communicating, that if we don't have one person that that's that single source of truth and information, we're going to have some of the same frustrations that we had leading up to the Bond referendum, which is presentations by a bunch of different groups, a lot of information coming out from a bunch of different places, but not like, not that single source of information. And so, you know, I would recommend and not to have overkill, but to have that single person, that project executive who owns the entire process, that has their hands in all of the information, is getting all of the details in these various task force and then putting it in a specific area that can be viewed by the public. And even to go further down the rabbit hole with Ms. Connolly, have a very detailed step-by-step charter, as Ms. Hardy mentioned, of when things are actionable, checking the box on what's actually been accomplished. Otherwise, I think we're still going to have a lot of confusion in terms of what's happening, where the information's being held and who has it. So, you know, I know that that had been visited a while back, having that project executive, but I'd still like to put that out there, that we have that person that sits over top of all of this that does nothing but focus on this project.
Mr. Snyder?
I mean, I think Councilmember Lickenhouse, I agree with you about the source of information. I think that's an interesting comment, something that needs to be worked through here, that is, where does the public go to get all the information about this? And it may be the PIO, it may be whatever, but I'm not entirely sure I'm in agreement that we need a single head here. I think we need cooperation, but I, I'm not sure of the functions. We may be in agreement, certainly your point about where does the public go to get information? What's the authoritative source for information? We ought to probably make that clear on both the school and city side. But beyond that, are you suggesting that there be a single person in charge of the whole thing or are you suggesting something else? I'm just trying to understand what your idea is.
So when I look at the flow of information, I look at the arrows going between the task teams, ED, campus coordinating, school design, and then back on the other side of the task teams. And in terms of coordinating all of that between the various entities, who is the individual or the entity that is making sure that all of that flow of information is taking place? It's all says what it's supposed to say, it's relaying what's been done to various committees and it's getting where it needs to be. That's the point because you, essentially every, every single individual that you have involved here, aside from the two project managers, has various roles and have other things going on at the same time. I'm just concerned about there being that efficient flow of information.
Well, there might be a direction we could go of more of a centralized information function with this. In terms of executive function, though, I do think that, you know, one of the things that's just a feature of this project is that the school team, they know how to build a school. It's a skill set that they have, it's kind of built into how they operate. And similarly, on the city side, we know how to do land use and we know how to plan and promote and have economic development. It's built into the fabric of how we operate. And so overlaying those two functions with a new executive function does give me and the superintendent pause. But the need for joint communication is a real need and I understand the point about the referendum. And what we chose at that point was to have a sort of a bifurcated system where if you want the financial information, you go to this portal, if you want the school information, you go to that portal because there was a need for quality control over the information. But it was frustrating for the public, I'll acknowledge that. So I think we need to take that comment and work that a little bit because I think it is, that's a, that is a real need, to make sure that the communication is unified, even if we do have two project management structures. Does that, does that get at the concern that you're voicing or?
Yeah, the single source of truth and information, yes, but, you know, I guess if seeing a charter and seeing the schedule of how this is going to take place, if there seems to be enough coordination, maybe. I still have concern. Oh, sorry.
I mean, I still have concern. I mean, the single source of information is great, but just in terms of coordinating and making sure that, that all these various entities are relaying what they need to, you know, I guess that's, that's yet to be determined, but I've voiced my concern.
Ms. Hardy?
So I feel like I made that same speech about a month ago. So I'm, I still have the concern. I feel better knowing that we are hopefully going to have a PM on the city side starting in a week or so or two weeks. Before we lose that thought, though, I do think amplifying the role of whether it's this campus coordinating committee or somewhere else, but having that centralized source of communication to the community is really important. So I want to make sure we don't lose that. And so if we could follow up and think about how we do that, because I think that has been a source of angst for the community is it's confusing for people to figure out where to go for information. But the idea of kind of a project executive, I think, is also at the end of the day, who is going to be responsible for making sure this entire project goes well? And I think at the end of the day, right now, the buck stops with the city council and the school board. And I think at the end of the day, this is one piece of land and one big project and people don't view it as two distinct projects, even though they are very different in their own ways. There's enough linkages between the two that I think having someone responsible for that's really important. And so if we don't want to solve that, because I certainly, you know, don't want to have another mouth to feed permanently either, and so I understand the concern from the budget perspective, it's just overhead of not having a project executive. But if we can be more clear in the expectations of these two PMs, as well as the frequency that they are talking, as well as how often information funnels through this campus coordinating committee, that might help alleviate some of it. But I do share Mr. Lickenhouse's concerns because I felt like I gave the same advocacy speech about a month ago for the same idea, as well as I think members of the community have done the same thing, who have project management experience in large programs like this. I think we're only just speaking from what we've seen work well successfully in, you know, other places.
Mr. Shields, can you maybe assign someone in the communications office to be that communicator? In other words, that this is your, you own this, this is your job to put out something every whatever, you know, every week, you're going to do an update on where things are or whatever it is?
Absolutely. The issue is, and I think this is kind of where, is pulling the information and making sure you have the right information from the school team and the city team, the general government team. And, you know, that I think is kind of the issue that we're wrestling with. I think it can be done, but I think this conversation has highlighted the need for that, that public information piece to be more unified, that the communication piece just can't approach this as there's, this is, there's a school communication piece and a general government communication piece. It needs to be unified, unified command on the communication. So how we do the staffing, I will say for the referendum, that was an issue in terms of who was the lead. And so we need to revisit that for this project, you know, which is going to stretch out for years and making sure that that's staffed appropriately.
Let me also ask you, I'm sorry, did someone have a comment here? When were you anticipating getting a draft RFQ out?
Well, for the council to see and the public?
Yes.
So what, we have a draft RFQ that we're working over internally and we think for, that it does need a little bit of work before it really even deserves getting out to have everybody start beating it up or improving it. And so our date was to get that out prior to the January 16th work session, unless there's a desire to get a rawer copy out earlier. But my recommendation would be to let us get it into a shape that we think is, where we'll get the best public input on it because, you know, we feel like we've got a good, good starting point with it.
And so you anticipate that that would be the RFQ, what do we call it, RFQ or RFP?
So this is the step one and...
Well, the schools changed sort of their terminology a little bit, right? So it's an RFP?
I think the city attorney is wanting me to call it the RFP, phase one for conceptual.
Well, that's, that's what the PPEA calls it, so that's why. But I think that that nomenclature can be changed if we need to.
But so we're going to get something prior to the 16th and then February 1, let's say, we're going to be doing a roadshow for about a month, right? Is that right, anticipated that we're going to go, let the word out to development community, this is what we're seeking and really actively court developer interest and put this out, push this out as much as we can to get the maximum amount of people interested in bidding?
Just in terms of this, yes. I would say, however, in February, it's probably going to be more targeted to try to get really quality input and quality discussions with, with the right types of developers that we think are appropriate for the project. March is when it's really a broadcast push out and to try to cast the net out as wide as possible because we have an RFP that's, you know, RFQ that's on the street at that point. And that would also involve an industry day where we invite the entire development community to us after the RFP's out on the street to promote it and answer questions about it.
So you would envision that the 16th, the public would sort of be open to the public, you know, here's what we're proposing? And then we just discuss a town hall shortly thereafter to allow, I think we did at least, for the public to have a chance to, you know, hear about it, ask more questions, to have a really an evening devoted to them
That's right.
participating with the RFQ prior to being taken to market?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Comments, questions? Mr. Snyder?
Just a request, when this comes back for action, that is, the different committees, could you list probably two or three of the task forces?
Yeah.
So we can get going, council members can sign up for various things and we can kind of push that along.
Okay. And we could, I'll get that out like tomorrow so the council can be thinking about ones that you think you might individually want to be involved in. And I think that'd be helpful for the overall discussion about appointments on next Monday.
Yeah, I think the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just one more thing here. As I looked at the list of boards and commissions and what their roles are, and I just compared it to our list here on 23, there are two that aren't on there and I'm not sure that they need to be, but I don't want to leave them out. One is the historical commission and the other is the library board. The library board, I think, is busy enough with their own work that they may not want to be involved, although at some point there may be an interest in talking to the librarian at George Mason High School and coordinating with the library on that. But the historical commission, there have been, there's a group of citizens that are wanting to look at the history of George Mason and, you know, how it's going to look in the community and what is the legacy of different people that have been involved. So I'm wondering if we would like to add the historical commission over here to the boards and commission, explicitly on the boards and commission list. Does anyone not like that idea? Okay, please add that.
Okay. And I would note that in the packet, there was a draft resolution to create this committee. I would like your input on that substantively prior to next week and if, you know, we can have conversations about it between now and then to make sure that that charter, as it's spelled out right now, that charter is pretty broad. So if you have any further comments on it, let me know so we can work that out over the course of the week as well.
How about the task force teams? Do people have comments on that? Either something that doesn't belong in here or something that does, it's not an interest you might have, whether it's too many, too few, too cumbersome? I think Dan hit his finger on it. Dan, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yeah, thanks. I, I'm just looking at this, at this list here and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven. So in order to add one more, maybe one would have to come up, but the thing that strikes me is that, is that... me is that, is that the, there seems to be a little bit of overlap between the procurement team and the evaluation team. I'm not sure what the evaluation team does per se. Do they look at it in terms of economic benefit, in terms of whether it's a good deal for us versus a good deal for, I don't know, for realty or whatever? I would, I would like some consideration to be given to, and I don't want to just go down the environmental path so quickly, but more broadly speaking, one of regional resilience. So resilience would include sustainability. It would also include the looking at a district power production scheme. If we want to track certain kinds of businesses that, that needs Six Sigma Power Reliable It would also look at perhaps a way of taking advantage of the geography of one being one of the high points, that maybe you could have some sort of regional communications, homeland security kind of presence there as well. But so it all goes to a, a use for that site that maybe we haven't thought of to date. And I don't know how to capture that in words, so resilience is a word that comes to mind. So there's probably more thinking to be done on that, but that's, you know, where I am right now. Thanks.
Other comments about what's shown or not shown here as far as task force? Lickenhouse?
Yeah, I mean, I've got an interest in the, the pre-RFQ team, and I'd actually provided some information, I think, to Celeste earlier that we can, that we can get into because I think that's absolutely critical. The visibility and essentially the bullhorn aspect of this is going to be huge to drum up as much interest and value as we can in the development community.
I will volunteer for that.
So Mr. Lickenhouse, would that fit into the finance team?
That sounds like fun. What's that?
Is what you looked at earlier with, and provided earlier with respect to the Tysons example in particular, but, you know, things like a community development authority or business improvement district, or TIF, or any number of things, is that part of what a finance team would look at?
Oh, in terms of finance, I would say, yeah, and there's, so there's two things. I provided a couple of things earlier today. One was just an example we had discussed in the mayor's agenda meeting back in December, some kind of polished collateral to put out regarding the city and also what we're trying to accomplish with the school and then development sites. So a flashy polished piece here, the demographics, here's what the city has to offer, we're fully behind it, you know, kind of bullet point to get people interested, and it's kind of a leave behind, whether it's the industry day or the roadshow. And then the second piece was an analysis on tax rates between various jurisdictions, but more specifically, the various taxing jurisdictions in the Tyson submarkets, so some of the higher density markets. And I provided that through, through Celeste to everybody, and what I wanted to show is that when you look at the breakdown of the tax rates in Tysons, they were successful in overlaying a special taxing district. And a big part of what that did was allay some of the liabilities and frankly, unplanned liabilities associated with transportation. So I look at that particular site as the opportunity to overlay a special taxing district, and so that would come into play both in finance and procurement, and probably in marketing. And the reason I wanted to bring that up tonight is because we don't have to set what a specific tax rate might be from a transportation perspective, and in Tysons, they call it a Dullis Rail Tax. It's really associated with Silverline, and they've got a couple of other things, but it gives us some flexibility. One, to generate some additional revenue off of that site, but two, to help cover some of the costs with Metro, and I know that Councilman Snyder's been, been beating that drum for quite some time, and I, I don't expect for Metro to, to stop putting their hands out on a regular basis, and that basically provides a buffer for us, and that's a good opportunity. So when you think about, let's just say it's a $400 million assessment on that site, probably on the low range, even a 15 to 25 cent additional tax rate on just that site, not throughout the city, just that specific site associated with transportation, call it a rail tax, transportation-oriented, it gives us the ability to generate some revenue and maybe offset the tax rate for the rest of the city in the long run, but generally speaking, provides that buffer to cover some of those costs. So long, long way of saying, one, we'd need it for finance purposes because it would obviously play into the revenue the site generates. We need it from a procurement standpoint because that would need to be issued prior or through the RFQ process, roadshow, industry day, to let folks know that there would be an additional tax overlay because developers are going to want to know that. They don't necessarily need to know exactly what the rate is, but to let them know that it's going to be higher than the 1.3 that we have, so just understand that this is kind of the range that we're thinking of, here's what it's going to go to cover. And to some extent, you can also use that to get some of the creative discussions going about where that money is used on that site necessarily if it's transportation related. So I don't know if that answers your question about the tax piece, but it would need to be involved in both procurement finance and, and pre-RFQ. The planning with the developers for they underwrite is, is critical to let them know that that's out there because that's going to be the single biggest operating expense they have on the income side and expense side of that, that commercial real estate.
Carol, why don't you, along those lines, take a look at just legal authority for that and see if there's any, you know, things that we need to be considering, in consideration of what Mr. Lickenhouse has just said?
Yeah, there's a number of different ways to do that, and I'll get some general background so that we can consider them as we move along.
Just one last kind of firm request on that. I would say that we absolutely need to have that language ready before we start taking this message out to the development community. So if that's February, if it's March, we need to let them know that we are in the process of implementing a special taxing district so they can kind of keep that in mind and know that when they go to underwrite this, even at the conceptual level, that there will be some additional cost, or potentially some additional cost there.
Ms. Hardy?
I just had a question from Mr. Shields. So while I know that Alvarez-Marcel did contemplate kind of special taxing, was it incorporated in their valuation?
It was not. It assumed that there was not a taxing district. CDA or special taxing district is addressed in their report, and, and I think the point is well taken that the market needs to know if that is their intention, or it's preferable that the market knows that, if that's their intention.
Do we largely think that it would be upside so that we would just reap whatever benefits, or do we think that would actually limit the type of people who would come because taxes be higher? Like, what does Alvarez-Marcel think?
It's a, it's a complex topic, but it, in some respects, if it's a payment that comes, that's easier for a developer to finance. And so, you know, potentially, between coming up with cash right now for a higher purchase price versus knowledge that you'll have a tax liability down the road, once the property is income-producing, a CDA could be an attractive option if the net present value of the dollar amount was the same. I mean, you kind of break it out in terms, in terms of that financial analysis, the CDA is a potentially attractive tool for us.
Why don't you have them be prepared at least for discussion, for consideration-
Yeah.
-when they turn up? All right. Other comments, thoughts, questions? Maybe two people will have interest either in a task force or being one of these two people. Could let Celeste know as well, and we can try to, maybe this is somewhat self-selecting. All right, what else do we have on the campus side?
There's one other issue, and you'll see in the write-up on it, there's potential for an at-large member, and that was a comment that the Economic Working Group had as to whether there should be an at-large member. We've named city council, planning commission, EDA, school board, potentially PTA or the peak groups, but there might, it might be valuable to have some at-large members as well. If, if you go with the at-large option, I would recommend that the city manager and the superintendent then not be formally members of the task force, I think the, or the coordinating committee, I think there's value in not having it be too big. We will support it, but whether we need to be members of it or not, we're going to go to every, we're going to go to every meeting, but I don't know that we need to be formally named members of it.
Any other thoughts on the campus side of this discussion? Sure.
Just the at-large idea? It does start to get really big if you're trying to-
Yeah.
If you've got two, three, four, eight. How big do we want the campus coordinating committee to be? Big enough to get lots of wide input, but not too big to be unwieldy? One of the reasons that, like the, what was our process working group, let you? The Campus Project Working Group that had two council members and two school board members and then staff as well. It worked really well because it was pretty nimble and small, and the four people that were appointed to it were willing to do a lot of work.
That's right.
So my concern is if we start to make the campus coordinating committee too big, it just gets too big and unwieldy, and you need, the people on this committee need to be willing to put in the time and the elbow grease and the preparation time. They can't just show up and expect to talk. And I think that's really important for those who are going to be on that group.
Mr. Mayor, I, I think the other thing about this coordinating committee is that the understanding of the people serving on there ought to be that they are representing the larger groups, that this is not an uber steering committee. That's not what I think you have in mind here. This is literally, the steering committees are the two with the ultimate legal responsibility. This is literally a coordinating committee between the two. This is not an uber overall charge. Now, we could go that way if the census to go that way, but I don't think that's what's envisioned here. So I just think that ought to be clear, and maybe when this comes back, you might want to say that this committee will report each week to the, to the, back to the school board and city council to underscore that it is, it is, it does have limits as to what its responsibility is.
Okay. Any, Mr. C?
Yeah, the other thing is that I, you know, for, for clarity, you should move the two project manager, project managers' names to maybe this space down here to show that they're in support of this effort as opposed to being on top and move them closer together if that follows what you were trying to explain earlier. So we don't have to do this Mary Beth Conley Rainbow Bridge or whatever it was that she was drawing.
Kind of like the bridge.
Okay. Anything else on this topic? If not, why don't we move on to fiscal policies?
Thank you, Mayor Carter, members of council. The fiscal policies are just here on the work session agenda to review the information that was requested earlier and, and just make sure that if there are any other questions out there, that we've addressed questions that, that the council might have. By way of introduction again, what we've tried to do with the fiscal policies is acknowledge the fact that we will break the, the fiscal policy that states that debt service shall not exceed 12% of the city's annual expenditures. And if we do that, we lay in some ways that we add some additional resiliency to the city's finances. We think that would be prudent. We think it also would be very helpful when we sit down with outside entities when it comes time to sell the bonds for the school. So specifically to change, you know, in the event that we are going to exceed the 12% policy, which has been on the city's books since 2001 as a formal policy, that we would increase available fund balance to 20% of expenditures. And that's a change from the current policy, which is unassigned fund balance, which is different from available fund balance. Available fund balance is a broader term. Unassigned fund balance at 17% of expenditures. So what's provided in your packet is just some of the numbers behind that, and then an additional handout today was a request from Councilmember Hardy to ask the question, what would happen to those ratios if we did not increase and make any contributions to our unassigned fund balance, but just kept it at the current level of 14.8 million dollars? And so that information is there, and we'd be happy to answer any further questions that you have about it.
Questions?
Could you, could you interpret Ms. Hardy's chart, or could Ms. Hardy interpret her chart?
I needed a little refresh of myself after the holiday. So if I remember correctly, where we were with fiscal policies is that the new proposal involves kind of a new definition, kind of what we call the available total balance, which is a combination of unassigned fund balance, capital reserve, and other balances. So in this spreadsheet, you'll see that called out as available balance one, two, and three. So I think the new policy had recommended we still maintain unassigned fund balance between 12 to 17%, but that we'd also make the policy more flexible and a little more simplified by saying that available balance could be between 15 to 20% should we exceed one of those parameters we had outlined. What I had proposed in this modeled scenario is, well, what if we did not actually stay at the target of 17% of unassigned fund balance? Because I think our policy officially says a range of 12 to 17, 17 as a target, but it outlines kind of that range of 12 to 17. So I propose, what if we just maintained the current almost $15 million in unassigned fund balance? Would we still be within the new 15 to 20% available balance? And so that's what this chart shows. So it maintains, I think, what's labeled as number one, current actual unassigned fund balance at 15 million or so. And you'll see that the percentages underneath show that we are still within that 12 to 17% range, although we clearly deplete over time because our debt service drives up through total expenditures, so your denominator gets much bigger over time. And then if you go four or rows down, available balance is a total percent. The fiscal policy outlines a target between 15 to 20%, but the target, preferably, I think, our CFO would have us staying at 20%. And you'll see that with the exception of FY 2021 and FY 2023, we are still within 15 to 20%. And so where I was going with this is, my concern with adopting the fiscal policies before is, I think we all wanted Mr. Lickenhouse to join us, but I think the other concern is by saying that we are going to stay at 17% only unassigned fund balance, it required an injection of X number of pennies perhaps at the end of each fiscal year. And I think the city manager proposed that we would use end-of-year surplus and underspending to cover that. And I think that's row, five rows down. That's the amount needed each year to keep unassigned fund balance at 17% if we didn't let it just deplete. It's called increase in 17% fund balance. So for, the first amount needed is 885,000 FY 19, and each year it goes up. So 885 is two pennies on the tax rate. So if we wanted to keep it at 17%, i.e., go from 14, almost 15 to 15.7, we would need to put in 885 next year. And then the following year, we'd need to put in three pennies. And so my concern, I think, and some of our other, the rest of our concerns, is that by adopting a policy that says we need to keep it at 17%, not only would we need to increase the taxes for the project itself, but we would need two to three pennies each year if we couldn't depend on end-of-year surplus and underspending. And I think over email, we had seen data from the past three to five years where we looked at end-of-year surpluses were between 500 to 800. So I'm personally not comfortable relying on that, given what our track record has been. I don't think we're going to have end-of-year surpluses over a million every year and can depend on that. And so I think it's just worth the discussion, I think, of whether we want to stick with 17% as the absolute target, because I think that will have an implication that we will need other pennies to make up for that, because I don't think it's fair to assume that we will have end-of-year surpluses. So it's a very long-winded explanation, but I need to go through that myself to remember what we talked about. Sure.
So when we looked at using other fund balance as opposed to unassigned fund balance, did one trump the other, or do we have to fit both? Was that the-
Yeah, that was one of the clarifying questions, is that we, I didn't realize you have to use both. So I think that was in the policies, is that the 15 to 20% does not replace the 12 to 17% target. Both policies would be in effect.
Both.
Which is where I think the concern is, is that-
Right.
But Ms. Ball should clarify, because I remember asking this over email, and I think it said that both policies, we would have to abide by the 20% available balance as well as the 12 to 17 unassigned fund balance.
So that's correct. It's in the years that we exceed the threshold on the debt service to expenditure and the payout ratio thresholds for the years that we would come and meet the higher thresholds on the general fund, available fund balance. And the years that we do not exceed the thresholds on those, we would still be in the current policy of 12 to 17%. 12% being the floor and 17% being our target. Just as an overarching comment to your question, when you calculate the unassigned fund balance, keeping it at 14.9 or approximately 15 million, you definitely see a drop over the years from 17% to 13%, a gradual drop because the, the total is getting depleted. It's not a message we want to give to our credit rating agencies. It would definitely be a concern for them that our fund balance as a percentage of our total is dropping. That was a concern- That was a concern also voiced by Davenport and they'll be available here on next Monday to explain that in further details if you have more questions. On your question about staying between 12 and 15% versus the 17, so the city has been complying with keeping up with our 17% target. And if we just drop to the 12 to 15%, yes, it's within the policy. However, we are much below our target that we have maintained. It kind of weakens our fiscal position in front of them. And for that reason, it becomes essential for us to aim higher than 17% in the years where we are adding on excess debt service.
I hear you. And I heard Davenport loud and clear with their advice, especially if we want to maintain our current ratings, if not hopefully increase.
Yeah.
I think my concern with this is that we just need to be a lot more explicit that if we are going to stay within, stay at 17% as opposed to 12 to 17, that row, you know, that starts with 885, that is the amount of money we're going to need to put in unassigned balance each year on top of the debt service, you know, tax rate impacts that we've already communicated to the public. And that just hasn't been clear. And that's my concern is that we need to be very transparent that in order to, you know, secure the loan at the rate that we think, you know, with the 4% or 3 and 5%, we think we need to maintain this fund balance and that's a choice that we, this council decides to make. I think we need to be very explicit with the community because that hasn't been clear so far.
Okay.
Of course, Vice Mary Conley.
All right. So if we look at the bottom line here, available balance as a percent of total, we've got 31, 30, 25, 16.99. This all stays within the 15 to 20%.
So you are 17 and the year 21 and year 23 is a drop.
21 and 23 are a drop, but they're still between 15 and 20%.
So yeah, they're not at target. They're closer to the floor. Yes.
They're closer to the floor.
Right.
Does that require a tax increase? And which are the years in here that we are out of policy compliance? Because it's not all of these years.
No.
It's just three, right?
Just, yeah, four years.
So which four years are we out of compliance?
We're starting in 22 and to 26, I think those are the four years. Or 21, too. I don't have that chart in.
I'm sorry. So it'd be 2021, we'd be out of compliance. And then in 2023.
No, but I think she's indicating the chart when we, the debt service exceeds the expenditure over 12%.
Right. Our bar chart. What are the years?
It was starting 21 for about four to five years.
Oh.
So then 18, 19, 20 aren't a concern, right? Because we're in compliance 18, 19, 20.
19 is the first year where we're starting our debt service. So I think it won't be 19 for sure.
So then we're out of compliance in 19. We're not out of compliance in 21.
We're, no, we're not out of compliance in 19. It'll be 20 or 21 onwards. I don't have, but I know for sure we're not out of compliance in 19.
Okay. So what I'm trying to do with this chart is just highlight, where are the years that we're actually really concerned about it? Where we will be out of compliance unless we change the policy?
So the years that are of concern to us are 21 and 23, because those are within the five-year window that we will be exceeding our debt service to expenditure and we'll be below the floor of 20%. So those are the two years.
Okay. So if we have to raise taxes to cover some of that, would we just have to do it in 21 and 23 or do we have to start in 19?
It would have to be 21 and 23 because those are the, well, those are the years where we do not have sufficient capital reserve to beef up our available balance. That's, those are the years where we draw down our capital reserves.
Right. But so then the question is like Ms. Hardy's saying, we, in 19, do we have to raise it two cents or we don't really have to raise it to any cents until 2021 if?
Well, we do.
Or is this just so theoretical it doesn't?
I would caution the council about not getting too wrapped up around these numbers. I mean, what we're doing is setting a good pole star of where we want to be for our target. And so what will happen over time is we'll keep that pole star in mind and there will be recessions and there will be recoveries and we'll keep that pole star in mind and what this stands for is we're going to break one policy, we're going to add some resilience to another policy. And I, I just don't, I mean, I acknowledge the fact that, yeah, and in the upcoming years, we've, we're, you know, you look at those numbers and, and we'll need to grow our fund balance. But that's, that's happening without any policy change anyway. So if we decided not to take any action, we'd still, we'll confront that.
Email. That's an email.
You know, I, so city manager and CFO, I understand your, your caution about overreacting to this. And no one can predict the future, but this is based on two assumptions. One, no, no additional development coming online, so no new revenue being produced, correct? And the other assumption is that, is that you're going to assume a 3% growth in, in projected expenditures. It could be more, it could be less. I mean, these are assumptions you built in here.
Right. But I would say here's the way development functions in this chart, is that with growth comes surpluses. Because you almost always, when you're budgeting, you don't know what your growth is going to be and, and you try to be prudent about it. And, and that is, you know, that's sort of the foundation of what, you know, allows local governments to prosper is you, you do need to grow. And so having that private investment, that is what produces surplus.
Right. So no one is saying that you're doing a bad thing by, by not factoring that in here. And as, as my fact, this conservative chart that tries to eliminate all the areas of variation, I think it's a smart way of looking at this. At 3% is basically the, call it what you will, cost of living pressures from having staff on hand. You know, I'm just mindful of just looking at last week, when it seemed like half the city was lined up outside the commissioner of revenues, the treasurer's office, writing big checks. I mean, really, really big checks. I was standing next to a person who wrote a huge seven-figure check. And I'm saying, well, you know, should I worry about that? I mean, obviously you're going to put all these millions of dollars you have collected just for the city side escrow and that's not counted in here either, but, or any interest you might get off that. But I think it's kind of worrisome, you know, longer term that the, the growth that we have counted on over the last five, eight years may not materialize next year. The, the house may have to sell for less. I don't know. No, no answer for that. You don't have to answer that. Thank you.
So, you know, I'd love to try to find a way to get the yes on this because we're all about the same thing here, right? We want our books to look good so that we can do all the great things we want to do. So I'm really working hard to try to, to try to get to the point where I, A, understand it and B, can explain it to somebody else. Not quite there yet, got to admit. I was sick during the holidays, so I didn't get my required questions into you while you were away. I've got about five or six right here right now. Don't really want to take tonight's time to go through them all. Don't expect I'm going to get ready to vote on this by next Monday. That's just my personal observation. Thank Ms. Hardy for generating this chart, which sheds some light. I guess, you know, from just a high altitude perspective, the thing that I would love to be able to explain to people first and foremost is the Fairfax City experience. A jurisdiction of roughly similar size to us, which undertook a very ambitious capital campaign with an expectation that they were going to have to raise their taxes, their tax rate, accomplished that capital campaign and did, I think, not have to raise their tax rate. I, you know, I've been hearing this for a number of years, asked Davenport about it. They didn't seem fully up to speed on it. I just feel like that's a real world experience that, that we ought to be able to bring, you ought to be able to bring to us and explain how we are going to do it differently from them because of X, Y or Z. You know, how maybe, you know, you could generate a chart that would show Falls Church having the kind of experience that Fairfax City had, if these things happened, if we did grow aggressively. I mean, again, you know, we're trying to get to a yes here on economic growth, to generate new revenues, on restraint and spending, which we have sent a message to both the manager and the superintendent on and on these policies. So I guess, you know, my first question is, can we, you know, get a decent explanation of the Fairfax City experience so that we would be able to learn from what they did and see if we can replicate it? Because it seems like it was basically fairly successful without the kind of tax rate increase that we seem to be contemplating here. My other questions are a little more down in the weeds kind of questions that to some degree Ms. Hardy spoke to, you know, the fact that we, the current policy is a range. It's 12 to 17%. We, in this material here, discuss 12 as a floor and 17 as a target. 17 could be a ceiling. If we got a floor, we need to have a ceiling. So whatever numbers we use, you know, can we give ourselves the flexibility to be doing, you know, good, reasonable, legitimate work when we are not exactly hitting at, you know, 20% or whatever number it is you choose to want us to hit at? Can we say, you know, it was a pretty good year, we got to 18 and the world is not going to end because we didn't get to 20? I wondered that before with our current policy and I certainly, if we're going to adopt a new policy, would like to know that also. I need to understand, are we committing ourselves to all underspending at the end of the fiscal year, being dedicated to reserves? Because if we are, I'm not in favor of that. I want to have the flexibility to have council-directed spending if we have, you know, a surplus, underspending. You know, I think our current policy suggests that we're required to put it into reserves and, you know, we haven't always done that. So we've broken our current policy and yet here we are in a pretty good shape to do the things that we want to do. I certainly don't want to pass a new policy that ties future councils' hands and prevents them from taking, you know, certain amounts of money out that were in underspending and dedicating them to specific things, whether it's traffic calming or other needs that, you know, a council may see arise. You know, the, the target numbers on line 243 to 265 in terms of our recovery rate, you know, if bad things happen, we give ourselves X number of years to recover. Why don't we just give ourselves more years? I mean, we say we got to do it in two or three. Why not four or six? In almost every instance, I would bump those up because to me, the, the real problem in the city here is that after the last recession, we overcorrected. We basically, you know, panicked. Now, there were good reasons for doing it and I'm not faulting anybody who was in office then. I think, you know, they did, they did a lot of great things. But I think the economy recovered here more quickly and we ended up with a tax load on the citizens that's out of line with Arlington's, our nearest neighbor. And I'm hoping that we could prevent that kind of thing from happening again. So can our recovery rate be more of a glide path rather than, you know, a steep cold water shock treatment? What is an emergency? What is an emergency? I mean, the document says unforeseen economic events. Well, what does that mean? You know, what would, what would qualify as an emergency? Like Mr. Z said, is change in federal tax rules that affects, I don't know, sales of houses and, and values of particularly higher priced houses here. Is that an unforeseen economic event that qualifies as an emergency? I might say it is. Others might say it isn't. I don't know, but I'd like to have a better understanding of what an emergency is. And I think finally, the notion of, what is the magnitude of the concern? I get it that, you know, Davenport, Wall Street, they're concerned. That's their job. You know, we have a lot of masters we have to serve here. We have to serve staff, we have to serve Davenport, we have to serve Wall Street, we have to serve the taxpayers. I'm trying to understand how, how much unhappy is Wall Street going to be? You know, is it going to be like a million dollars unhappy or is it going to be less unhappy? We sort of got, started talking with Davenport about that a little bit, but didn't really get a good dollar figure in my head. And now that Ms. Hardy's chart is here, we can kind of see, yeah, I mean, at some point down the road, sooner or later, we're going to need to raise the tax rate solely to beef up the proposed new guidelines that we're being asked to adopt. Well, we got a dollar figure there. How's that, how does that compare to the increased borrowing costs that we're going to face if we have a policy that is more as I've described? That is more flexible, that is, that has a range, not, you know, a target which is in fact, you know, the only number that really counts. Because if we don't hit that target, we have failed. So that's, you know, I guess a final question that, that I would like an answer to and not even necessarily related to this, but because it has been so much in the news, I would like a better understanding of, I think we've taken in about $4 million last week that we didn't expect to take in from people paying in advance. And obviously that money has to be put in the lockbox and, and it's as if it's not there, except it is there and presumably we can earn a little bit of interest on it. Now, it's not going to be much, but here in Falls Church, you know, not much is enough to give Ms. Hardy the lights that go all the way up to, you know, the end of town. I mean, we are, we are, we are small. I get that. And, and so, you know, what happened last week, I would like a little better understanding of how that's going to be shown on our books when we go to Wall Street. Because based on the last time we met here, we didn't have that $4 million bucks and now we do. And, you know, I'm sure there's going to need to be a way to explain that.
I think, I think we can explain that.
I think there's going to be a way to explain that and that's fine. But anyway, all these questions are, are ones that I would like to be able to take and I appreciate the forbearance of my colleagues going on a little bit longer here than I'd plan to.
So just, just a, just a common response to all your questions, specific questions. Your fiscal policies are your guiding principles. Nowhere have you specified in the policies today that you are going to use all unspent or reserve, I mean, surpluses or underspendings are going to go into unassigned fund balance. It's not specified. The council has the discretion to appropriate it. However, we all realize that we are going to be increasing our debt fourfold from 61 million to 100, 218 million over the next few years. So there are things that we are going to be required to do and not just do for the sake of Wall Street or Davenport Financial Advisors, but just for ourselves as a city to make sure that we are on the right path for our financial sustainability. There are policies we are going to have to look at and we are. I, I hear you that we have a significant amount of fund balance, 17%. We're at the ceiling or target, whatever we call it. But if we amend those policies to come to a point which is going to make us look weaker, it's not a good message to send. What will it cost it? It could cost us up to half a basis point in getting, or even 1% in getting our debt. We can provide you those numbers. It means significant amount of dollars over the life of the debt, the 30-year debt. It's in millions. And in addition to this, we have the looming market adjustment that could happen anytime, which could make things a little bit worse for us. Right now, the model that we did and we projected to you, you know, included interest rates from 3.5% to 5%. Just without anything, if the market adjustment happens and we are able to keep these policies, we will still be taking the debt on higher interest than what we have modeled. So I'm, I'm just bringing all these factors in front of you because, you know, we've gone through a lot of meetings, things get said and, and not everything comes back up. And you have brought up very good questions. And Fairfax County example, to their advantage, happened pre-recession. So they were not scrutinized as stringently as some of the other agencies are when they acquired debt after the recession. as stringently as some of the other agencies are when they acquire debt after the recession, and, and how we use our reserves, how we come up showing our operating balances, and making sure that we are strong enough to endure those recessions as well as continue our business, normal business. And what do you define emergency as? I mean, as, I'm just going by what other GFOA best practices are. Anything that's out of the norm, a boiler breaks down, you're going to use some of your money, which is not appropriated right now and required to fix it, unless we have some sort of a CIP surplus that's sitting, a project funding that can be diverted. If not, then we'll have to dig into our capital reserve. And one more thing I would like to say is that our 12% debt service to expenditure is on, on the lighter side already. The GFOA best practice says it should be between 8% to 12%, and we're at 12%. So we do need to look at our policies. If we do break that threshold, what are we going to do? I mean, that's the discussion that we're having now. It's not, it's not that we can say that, okay, we'll just go to 15%. We're already on the, on the not-so-conservative side of that threshold. So there definitely, as a city, we should look at our policies and make them stronger and make sure that we are able to endure any of our own, you know, the debt that we're acquiring, and making sure that we're fiscally strong, as well as endure any other economic downturns or market adjustments that happen along with that.
Thanks. Just one other thing that I, in the capital reserves policy, we have a, a utility reserves, right?
Yeah, to keep a balance of up to $3 million.
Capital reinvestment policy, general fund, page 63. So there, we shall maintain a balance of 5% of general fund capital assets, or 3.75 million, whichever is lower. I'm just curious, the whichever is lower construct is not one that we're applying to the other policies, right? Because, I mean, we could have a policy of X or $15 million, whichever is lower, and we could have $15 million and be good into the future. I'm just wanting to understand how to explain the fact that it's okay to have the lower number be the governing for that particular general fund.
So this is aside of the unassigned fund balance, the general fund, unassigned fund balance. This is the capital reserve?
Mm-hmm.
And?
Capital reinvestment policy.
Right. So it requires us to keep a balance of at least 3.7 million?
Well, actually, it says-
Or the lower of the two, yes.
Yeah, it says the lower of the two. I'm just, again, you don't have to answer all these questions right now, but the, the lower of the two being okay there, why is that okay? Whereas if our policy was, it has to be $15 million in our fund balance, or 20%, the lower of the two, you know, I pick $15 million, because that's going to be the lower of the two.
Right. However, the unassigned fund balance remains untouched. We are maintaining a ceiling there, a target of 17%. That is the first number that agencies look at, the unassigned fund balance. And then comes the capital reserves and any other committed and assigned fund balances that we have.
So you're saying that the standards are more loose for the capital fund balance than, than for the unassigned fund balance?
I, I mean, what I'm saying is that unassigned fund balance is the foremost source of revenues that we go to when there's an emergency. Capital reserves are for our capital projects and other things that we want to take on.
I don't want to take everybody else's time. If it's just me being dense, you know, you and I can talk offline, I suppose. But, I don't know, I would benefit from hearing from my colleagues who feel more comfortable with this, maybe than I do, either tonight or next week, but I'm just not sure that I'm going to be ready on January the 8th to, you know, commit myself and future councils to fiscal policies that are outlined here.
Ms. Hardy?
So I had one piece of information to share, and then two specific requests. So I think Vice Mayor had asked, which were the years that we're going to be out of compliance, where our debt service for the full CIP is going to exceed 12% of our total expenditures? So I'm using our colorful chart here. It is nine years, it's FY 2020 through FY 2029, where we're going to be above that 12% line. So it would be multiple years. But my two requests are-
The 2025, the full CIP. I'm looking at the full CIP chart. 21 to 25. Oh, 19. Sorry. 20, 20 to 25. It's one of the charts that went in the presentation.
That's from December, March.
Yeah.
This is from the same one, I think, but small. In any case, it's many years. The question I had is if, before our, with our discussion, maybe perhaps with Davenport, given that, I guess, the policy change adds this kind of new criteria, this available balance, and I think you were kind of alluding to it, is which is more important, the unassigned fund balance or this available fund balance? Given that we're going to try to adhere to both, is, do we always have to adhere to both? Is it more important to adhere to one and not the other with the intention of getting to adhering to both? Like, I think, I'd like to understand that interplay, because by, even though on paper it seems like we're being more flexible, saying, oh, you know, if you exceed this, you just, your total balance, so multiple buckets of money can be added up and pooled together, and you just have to stay within the target, which on paper seems more flexible. But if in reality, we actually still have to stick to the other one, it actually is not more flexible. It's actually probably a little more restrictive. What I'd like to understand probably from both our staff as well as Davenport is, which is more important, if we only stick to one with the other, even though we had an intention to get to both? Is it requirement to get to both within X number of years? What is the impact on our ability to maintain our rating or a favorable interest rate? Which is more important in a credit rating's eyes?
Yeah. I'm sure Davenport can provide a lot of details on it. Just, just a quick one, I would say, is that available sounds flexible, is flexible. However, we are committing our reserves. Unassigned, committed, assigned, we are committing those reserves as available fund balance. And, and should you want to redirect that, it will affect our percentages, and it will drop us below our targets.
Yeah. So I think that's, as a council, if we're going to vote on policies, I think we have to understand whether we want to commit ourselves to two targets now. Like, well, again, while it seems more flexible, the fact that we're going to outline a separate policy that says, you know, if we break rules that we're essentially indebted ourselves too much, we have a separate policy that says we need to stay between 15% and 20%, so that's a secondary target. And if that's the case, I think what I'd like to make sure we have before the discussion and the vote on next week is, what we were talking about, Row 5, so the amount that's required each year to inject in unassigned fund balance, whether we rely on a reserve, you know, rely on surpluses or underspending, or whether we rely on using additional pennies. I'd like that to be more explicit, because I don't think it's, it's a confusing topic that's complicated. But I think it needs to be more explicit, definitely among us, but also with the community, that each year, it could require this much money. 885, 1.1 million, 1 million, et cetera. And that could translate to two additional pennies on the tax rate, if council decides they need to stick to that policy that year. Again, I know that City Manager says we should not take this as, you know, gospel, and we may choose to not do that every year, but I think it needs to be a lot clearer than it is currently, because right now, it's, you know, it's just a working data sheet, so I understand that. But I'd like us to be more explicit, both among ourselves as well as the community, that if we are passing these policies, that is an implication, that we're either hoping that we have enough underspending each year to cover that amount, or that we will be asking for additional pennies. I.e., in FY 19, while we have discussion underway for six pennies, four for the high school, two for the other projects in IP, it could require as much as two additional on top of that in order to keep unassigned fund balance at exactly 17%. Does that make sense?
So as way of history, we provided, in response to some earlier question, 10 years' worth of underspending or overspending?
Yeah. Our run rate seemed to be between 500,000 to 800,000, looking at the past three years.
Yeah, and there were years that went up as much as three and as down as seven, with all the other water proceeds and all that stuff going on. So, do you have a question?
Yeah, if you're done. Answer.
So I was just, I was bringing that up, just, just to, as a reminder, that when the budgets are done, we only have six months of information, as we will this year, too, of the actuals. And, you know, it's, it's, obviously, nobody has the crystal ball, but looking at our performance, we are, we, I mean, there is a room for 500 to 800 or more, depending on whatever you want to go, either with the average or the last few years of performance as a indication of how we would perform. We haven't technically increased the tax rate to cover for increasing our fund balance to meet our 17% floor, our target.
I understand that, yeah. That, that's partly what makes me concerned, is relying on, because we only have six months of the current fiscal year before we set next year's tax rate, is can we rely on the next six, six months of performance, assume that, oh, that should be enough to cover on assigned fund balance if we are adopting these, these new policies? Again, I just want to make sure we're very transparent about the implications of this. I understand the reason why, it's on the table, I understand what Davenport's going to tell us, but I just think we need to be a lot clearer with the community on what this means.
Davenport will be at the meeting next week, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, just a couple of questions related to them. I'm just not entirely convinced that, you know, the sky is falling in terms of falling out of compliance for, was it five years? I think is what you had said, five years. I mean, and otherwise, and I haven't lived here, been around as long as, as some, but in, in, in otherwise, you know, sterling example of, I would say, you know, fiscal integrity in a city like this, that a blip for five years is going to wreak that much havoc on, on credit rating and policy and underwriting. I mean, that's, it's a pretty subjective thing, frankly, and to fall out of compliance for such a short period of time, and, and not moving the needle significantly, maybe I'm a little bit optimistic, but I'm just not terribly concerned that a complete fiscal policy overhaul to, to save the reputation and the credit of the city is going to be absolutely necessary. Maybe it is, but that would be a question I'd like to ask them in terms of-
Sure.
Given the length that we're out of compliance?
Sure.
If it's five years, and again, we've projected 3% expenditure growth here, so it hasn't contemplated cutting any expenses anywhere. And if, if I'm someone that's underwriting, you know, debt for a city, I would look at their ability to kind of throttle, to some extent, you know, the, the overall operating expenses as equally as maintaining a fiscal policy. And I understand we're bumping up against other things, but I'm just not, I'm not convinced that there's case, you know, call it case study out there that would suggest that we're out of compliance for five years, we're going in to borrow money for a project that is not, you know, it's not grandiose by any stretch, and it's also going to be backed by a significant amount of commercial development that the city is committed to, that someone's going to say, well, we're going to, you know, we're going to penalize you 50 basis points. So I, I would really like some real-world examples from Davenport in terms of what are the actual, real-world implications, given everything that's happening here, before we make a complete overhaul in terms of fiscal policy.
Yeah, they'll be here next Monday, and, and they have also indicated this at other meetings, previous meetings, that it's not like we won't be able to get acquired debt, we will, but it'll be at higher rates, possible higher rates.
Potentially.
Potentially, and, and they have given some ranges, and they'll be here next Monday to give you more concrete. And they have been informed, and they're going to bring some concrete examples of the cities and counties that are acquiring debt, and what they have done with their policies as way of example, if this is the only thing we should, we could do, or if there are other things that we could look at. But a thing to remember is that we're going, all three tranches of our issuances within this five to six years that we exceed the policy, so.
Okay. Well, I don't think we're, do you have other questions? I don't think we're going to resolve this issue tonight, I think we're just advancing the ball. Karen Oliver sent me a text saying it's almost 10 o'clock, and that we didn't wrap this part of the conversation up now. But in all seriousness, I think that a lot of issues have been raised, a lot of good questions have been raised, and I think we just got to keep working through this, and I think that'll take some time, but let's keep moving the ball along, and we'll be doing that on Monday. Unless there are any other comments on this particular issue, want to move on to? Mr. Snyder brought, and had the clerk send around a proposal for a technology group or council. Did you want to elaborate on that, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, in view of the lateness of the hour, what I circulated, and we can certainly make it generally publicly available, is to create a, a task force with a couple council members, but more to tap the expertise of our community in looking at things that are down the road but aren't that far down the road. For example, driverless vehicles. Do we have the opportunity to tie in with a university to effectively do some long-term planning and get ahold of some grant money that we're not, not able to do right now? So this is really an effort to look at potential challenges and opportunities for technology. And I, I remind people that driverless cars are going to be fairly numerous within the next five years. And under some scenarios, that ties up with Uber and the potential that cities are going to have to deal with unprecedented safety issues, as well as the opportunity perhaps to change our whole way of dealing with transportation. And that's just one element. You can see similar developments in the environmental area, and potentially in utilities, and similar developments across the board in terms of rendering public services. So I would ask for any comments, and then when we're ready to move on this, hopefully within the next, within the month, that we could go ahead and do it. So it's to really start a discussion. But to really tap, the emphasis is that this is not to be a government effort so much as to tap the, really, the incredible expertise within our community in the IT area, in the automotive area, in the environmental area, to bring that, to bear a sort of a think-tank to assist city government and the city council in some long-term planning issues. So that's the intent.
Okay. Any comments on that?
I love the idea, I think it's great to be in front of this. I was just wondering whether there's other jurisdictions tackling this, because I feel like they're probably, they'll need to solve it, too, so we might as well try to do it together, if it doesn't slow us down.
Okay. Why don't we move on to any other council member comments? Are there any other comments people want to make, or requests, statements, anything? All right, if not, why don't we go on a schedule? Is there anything to talk about scheduling-wise? I know it's on the agenda. Is there anything, Mr. Shields, or Ms. Heath?
We, on January 8th, we will be doing our official photographs at 7:00 PM before this meeting, probably in another room in this building.
In the art room.
Oh, in the art room. So plan to be here 7:00 PM.
And he can airbrush?
Photoshop.
Photoshop, yeah.
So one scheduled question, Mr. Aaron. Just one scheduled question. I see the Founder's Row SE Amendment application is scheduled to come to us in a work session on February 5th. Wondered if the manager knows if they would be able to give us a preview at the EDC meeting that would be Thursday, January 25th, or will they be ready by then to do the great unveil?
Well, what, you know, there are certain conditions we want met prior to them coming to the council. Those have not yet been met. So that February 5th date is there as a placeholder. I feel hopeful that those conditions will be met in order to meet that date. And so, let's work together on that EDC meeting, and I think it would be great if we could schedule them to come to the EDC meeting and have a discussion about those conditions and how they've met them.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other? Yeah, just one last comment. Prior to the, and I think it's on the schedule for the roadshow related to the campus, I'd sent around an example of something that Fairfax County's EDA put together. Can we have a commitment from Stat, yeah, it doesn't have to be exactly that, but can we have a commitment to have that ready? When were you talking about, February? Have it done?
Roadshow starts beginning of February, right?
So next three weeks to have something done? And I actually dug something up that I think our Economic Development Office put together a while ago, it was kind of a two-page thing, that I'll give you guys a copy afterwards. But if we could have that ready, so when folks ask, that's something very easy that we can send.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Z?
May I move that we adjourn?
Sounds like a plan. What do you guys say?
It's 10:01.
All right, all right, all right. We are adjourned. Good night, good day.